We're convening back from the special closed meeting. Sorry, mic's not working.
You guys hear him in the back?
I think it's real soft. And you know I don't talk soft, so.
Is that better?
Okay, that's better. We're reconvening from our closed session. We had two items. And any comment from City Attorney?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Council is in closed session this evening on two items. Conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, and there's no reportable action on that item. Also, we're in closed session on conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, City versus Wrangle, and there's no reportable action on that item as well.
We will now open our regular City Council meeting at seven oh three. If I could have the roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmembers Payne, here. Claire?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
I ask everyone to rise for a moment of silent prayer, and I ask that you would remember the earthquake victims in Southern California and in Mexico. Just as a personal note, I have several members in family and a lot of what I call brothers and sisters that are responders in Mexico, so. I will have them in my prayers. About the flag calling.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could have the video statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Shore West Cable system. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel fourteen and will also be webcast at www.saxmetromcable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at nine AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.ci.galt.ca.us. The VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the rest.
Okay, thank you. Agenda approval additions and or deletions. Are there any council members? No, Daryl?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Go to the next item, presentations. There's none tonight. And public comment. If you can read our statement, please.
Under Government Code, Section five four nine five four point three, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or in any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt City limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker.
Okay. Oh, we have a couple speakers.
We do have a couple.
Yeah, thanks.
John Slaughterback? After Mr. Slaughterback is Mr. Jimenez.
John Slaughterback. I live in the City of Galt. I hadn't planned to be here tonight, but I read an article in the Lowdy News Sentinel that kind of concerned me. So I have a few comments and a few questions, I guess. Sacramento County Latino Democratic Club has been frustrated about not being allowed to set up voter restoration table at the Galt Flea Market for the past two weeks. As it turns out, the Latino club needs to provide a form from the International Revenue Service to prove that the club is officially nonprofit organization. Galt City Manager Jason Berman said. The Latino club represented, provided the city with their club's income tax returns. Income tax returns should have supplied the information needed and required to make a decision whether they were either qualified or not qualified. They should have been able to determine that from the income for tax papers, I would have thought. Here in the paper, though, the city says not, they didn't say they didn't qualify. They said they didn't show proof that they were asking for. So the city's just, is the city playing hardball or does it not want the Hispanic community to participate in the democratic process? I didn't quite understand this, and that's why I'm here to ask you questions about it. It doesn't quite sound very good to me. Doesn't the city have a procedure, a chain of command that it follows? How can we expect every individual person to come in here at this city and know the procedures to pursue to resolve an issue? Shouldn't the low-level employees pass this information through the chain of command to its supervisors? Everybody seems to be trying to pass the buck here in the paper and this editorial. We seem to be implying that it's the club's fault. If we knew, if I knew the whole story and I thought this group was being singled out, I would be willing to pay for a spot at the market for them. Maybe you can explain this a little better tonight, what's going on here, but this sounds like it got out of control to come and wind up in the paper like it did. And this should have been brought before the superior, before it got to this point. It says two weeks here. You would have thought that these lower-level echelons would have passed this along and you'd have been informed about this. So I'd like to hear a few comments about it. Maybe somebody can explain it. I don't have to be here when you explain it, but I would like to hear somebody explain this a little better because I don't like the way it sounds here. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
I can respond briefly, Mayor. I'll tell you, I was really disappointed, not necessarily in our city staff, but in the Democratic Club of Sacramento County for the way that this matter was handled. I got an email yesterday at four forty-five in the afternoon from Representative of the Democratic Party of Sacramento County notifying me of the situation and claiming that they were discriminated against by our employees. Because of the late nature in the day, I couldn't get a hold of anyone to respond after I'd spoken with Jason later in the afternoon. And woke up this morning to see that they'd published a press release in the newspaper without actually giving the city an opportunity to explain the entire situation. Way that it was explained to me, Mr. Slaughterback, was we've had a situation like this come up with the past with the Republican Party that was attempting to do the same thing. We informed them that they could walk the flea market grounds for free, collecting signatures on the clipboard like a traditional petition circulator or registration person that's out trying to get people to register to vote. They didn't want to do that in this situation and demanded that they be afforded the rights of a nonprofit organization. The documentation that we were given originally was not sufficient. It did not prove that they were a nonprofit organization. They have subsequently filed that information with the city, and tomorrow, it's my understanding, that they will be out at the flea market in a booth under the nonprofit status. So they would have just waited twenty-four hours before filing a press release. Would have all got fixed.
Yeah, I mean, we just learned about this yesterday. And the other thing is they were never denied access to the market, as Councilmember Meredith suggested. And they were, they had every opportunity to rent a booth space at the normal, if you're a nonprofit, you get a discount on the rent, ten dollars off. And so they wanted to get the ten dollar discount. We said, well, you have to give us some information that says who you are and whether you're a nonprofit or not. They failed to provide that. We said, okay, you can still come. You can either walk or you can rent the booth space at ten dollars more, and then they chose to send off a press release. So again, you can't always believe everything you read in the newspapers, unfortunately.
But it's been taken care of, then?
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, John. Next speaker.
And after that, Woody.
Dan Jimenez, and I live in the city here in Galt. I want to address the issue of local hiring that took place at the last council meeting. First, let me say I'm retired, and fortunately, I'm not part of the workforce that's currently unemployed. My interest was, my interest on this issue is to see if this council could work together as one cohesive body and put the personal differences aside for the betterment of the people who are in need. I was here when Councilman Meredith first brought this proposal forward. To no one's surprise, the, to no one's surprise, the us versus them majority on this council voted it down. Then when I saw it on the last agenda and saw all the citizens here that night in support of it, I listened as the citizens pleaded their honest and emotional case. I was beginning to think, maybe, just maybe, this council could work together. What I saw instead was a council that is hopelessly unproductively divided as ever. In these tough economic times, this town does not need council members who are unwilling to go into uncharted waters because of personal differences with one another. This is a poor excuse for doing nothing. These so-called leaders lack the ability to ask themselves, is it possible and should we even try? You may not like this perception, but perceptions that don't change become a reality. At one time, the company I worked for for thirty years was on a downward spiral. Bill Keelit and Dave Patrick came up with a motto of what if. This simple motto was designed to stimulate creative ideas, no matter if those ideas took the company into uncharted waters. Every employee was encouraged to participate. Company and personal politics were put aside. No one felt threatened by who or where these ideas came from. That attitude and the cooperation from everybody made the company successful once again. That's not to say that I haven't heard some what-if ideas from those council members who are against local hiring. Here's an example of some of their creative what-ifs. What if we had a horse arena for the town? What if we cut down public comments from five minutes to three minutes because the seniors want to go to bed early? What if we reduce developer impact fees? I guess the city doesn't need the revenue. What if we elect a mayor for four years? What if we send out secret emails to aid our friendly developer get the proposals through? The merits of their what-if ideas beat for themselves. This clearly shows a lack of compassion and underscores the critical need for logical leadership. The unemployment rate in this town is a crisis. A crisis like this can bring the best or the worst out of a community. How our council and we citizens collectively grapple with the existing crisis in the incoming months or even years may either bring us together as a community or further divide and alienate us. As citizens of Galt, I hope we're mindful of this and remind the council to work together for a common good. You know, the real casualties here aren't the council members who bring these proposals forwards. The real casualties are the people that are unemployed and are looking for some kind of direction from this council. So in parting, I'd just like to tell all of you, cowboy up and start doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Two speakers. Regular. Regular scheduled matters. I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead, trying to move the meeting. We'll move back up to information consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar as recommended.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? None? What?
Roll.
Roll call? Oh, we're continually changing the procedures on how we do things. We discussed this about a year ago, so. These, this is one of the items where we do a, actually a roll call.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote, okay. And we'll start with Vice Mayor Payne?
Yes, Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Claire?
Aye.
Councilmember Haynes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meredith?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. And Liz just told me this like about an hour ago. Sorry. We have a couple other items that are same ways tonight, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we'll move into the scheduled matters. I guess we have none. Regular calendar, City Attorney?
Okay, number one, the subject ordinance repealing and readapting Chapter three point eight of the Galt Municipal Code entitled Claims.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, the city has an existing ordinance on the books dealing with claims. And basically, what this process requires is that before anybody wishes to institute litigation against the city, they're required to submit a claim to the city. And that claim is an opportunity for the city to become aware of the information that, that somebody contends that they have in fact been damaged by the city. The facts that surround that particular incident, the amount of money that the person is claiming. And it provides an opportunity for the city to decide whether or not they feel that that claim has merit and to either grant the claim or to deny it. There are some provisions in our existing claim ordinance that are no longer consistent with state law. So the ordinance before you this evening is intended to revise our city processes to become consistent with state law. The ordinance is actually pretty simple. Instead of adopting specific provisions for the city, in most cases, we just refer to the processes that are in fact in the government code. Which is very detailed as it relates to what needs to be in a claim, the timeline for the city to review that claim. And in the event that the claim is denied, the timeline for somebody to actually institute litigation against the city. The one particular item that I do want to draw to your attention is relating to the processing of claims. And what's proposed in Section three point zero eight point zero five zero of this ordinance is that for any claims that have a value of twenty thousand dollars or less, that the city manager would have the ability to negotiate and settle those claims. And for claims that involve an excess of twenty thousand dollars, those would only be settled with the authority of the city council. So unless there are any questions that I can respond to, it's recommended that the city council introduce this ordinance this evening and waive first reading.
Comments from council? If none, is there a motion?
Move to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? None. This is one, another one of the items that we will do a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Claire?
Aye.
Councilmember Haynes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meredith?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item, Community Development Department, twenty thirty Galt General Plan Annual Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council, members of the audience that are before you tonight is an update, an annual report on the city's general plan. In the past, we've done this periodically, but however, it appears more recently that the legislation has changed and we need to bring this to you on an annual basis. And it's simply kind of a, an overview of the status of the general plan. It gives you an idea of where we are in terms of housing, activities that the city has undertaken consistent with the city's general plan, as well as specific activities such as applications advancing policies in the general plan, such as the sphere of influence. You have a lot of, there's also an attachment or an Appendix A, which basically evaluates a lot of the implementation programs that are outlined in the general plan. Some of them have been fulfilled, some of them you work, the city works on consistently and on an ongoing basis, and others will be addressed in the near term or more distant term. But it is simply a document that we're required to bring forward for your acceptance. It was reviewed by the planning commission at their March twenty-fifth meeting, at which time they unanimously recommended that the council accept the report as submitted. So unless there are any specific questions, that concludes my report.
Comments or questions?
I have one.
Sure.
Regarding the Appendix A, I was just curious regarding the Habitat Conservation Plan.
Yes.
There's not really any update on that. Is there any, can you offer any more updates other than what's in the report?
My understanding, and I haven't been in contact with other member cities, they were looking for, were working through funding programs and were still refining a lot of the policy documents in response to the agencies which had commented on it, which would be U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Army Corps, as well as Fish and Game. So there's.
They're not moving very fast, in other words?
Not at this point, not at this point.
I had a couple of things if I could.
Sure.
First, on the RENA numbers.
Yes.
I think they're around page fourteen. Obviously, since those RENA numbers were adopted, the world's changed considerably. Have you heard anything lately as to where the next steps are going or the process?
They are, they've already started the new RENA calculations. We met briefly with Secog, oh, I'll say a month or so ago, and we will be having additional meetings with them as they go to set the new allocations that communities will, that will be responsible for here in Sacramento County.
Okay. Yeah, that's going to be interesting to see where that shakes out because not only has a lot changed in the demographic projections, but the formulas that were used of how much a home costs, as you know, the tables are designed to determine that a home is considered to be affordable at three times the annual income. And given that the house costs have dropped considerably, then all the categories of very low to low to moderate, medium income, all those mathematics change. So it could have a major effect on our numbers as we go forward, so.
Certainly, it certainly will. It'll be interesting how the state approaches that in making their determination.
Okay, if you can keep us posted as that happens, and if I'm hearing anything inside Secog, I'll also pass that on.
Thank you.
On page seventeen, I don't know if you want to change the last sentence of the article there about Galt place from that the groundbreaking should occur to that it did occur.
Okay.
Just a footnote. And I think it'd be useful for folks to maybe even to post a segment from page eighteen about our city's accomplishments that you've listed there. I think sometimes that cumulative list gets lost in the day-to-day business, but when you look back over the year of what's been achieved, a lot has been done. And I think that might be worth posting, just as a one-page post somewhere on our website.
If the council would like, then sure we can.
Good idea.
Otherwise, I thought it was, you know, a pretty good recap of where things are and the tables you have further on in the document, what's going on with a lot of the subchapters and the other components. Lot of work obviously has gone into that, so congratulations to you and your staff again.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Daryl touched on my issue about the RENA numbers, so pretty much got the answer I was looking for.
Okay. If there's no other questions, we need to have a motion.
I'll move. We accept the annual general plan report of our city's twenty thirty Galt General Plan.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? None. Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Next item, Police Department.
Strategic Plan Update. It takes twenty seconds. Do you have a mic? Yeah, you need a mic.
I think we need to wait a minute for it to warm up, so. We're giving it a minute.
Okay.
Warming up.
There it is. Thank you, Liz. Good evening to the Councilman Mayor, and we want to go through an update for strategic plan through the year two thousand and ten. The staff report does request that after we're done making the presentation that the council accept the strategic plan update. And obviously, any questions that need to be answered, we're glad to answer them. This is just a, the PowerPoint is kind of a highlight of the actual document that I provided for the council. So we'll go through it, giving us a little longer snapshot at what we've done since we've started, we had the Matrix Consulting Study in two thousand and six into early two thousand and seven. And these are the results of that study. City manager asked that we compile them for the council for an update, and it's been about two years since we updated it last. So if I'm lucky with PowerPoint, we'll see if I can get this to go. Currently, the present structure of the Police Department is as listed here. We still have one chief, two lieutenants, seven sergeants. We're up to twenty patrol officers, four detectives. We will have a school resource officer starting July first of this year, and we have one traffic officer. We have fourteen civilian positions with one of them currently frozen. That includes one police services supervisor, the admin secretary, the lead dispatcher, the seven dispatchers, the records technician, the crime prevention person, and the property evidence person. So when we go to the next slide, we also have Oliver Volunteers. I don't have all my chaplains in a photograph yet, but I'm working on getting them all together. Chaplains show up for me all the time, and they're a real asset for the Police Department. So these are the caps with Lynn Hutchinson. Great picture. I thought it was a really nice picture. Some of the folks have come and gone, some are semi-retired. We've got some new ones added on. We're going to have to upgrade our picture. But this is really the essence of why this is a great Police Department. We have these volunteer folks who come out and give four and five thousand hours of their time annually to the Police Department. This is a pretty interesting slide. I think the council will be pleased to see where the Police Department has gone staffing-wise. If you just look at the numbers over the years, how we've continued to add staff. When I started here in two thousand and six, there was a, the council had a distinct design to increase the Police Department staffing and the overall performance of the Police Department. And this gives you a pretty good feel that we are, you know, where we're staffed at now compared to where we were. It's a pretty, I think, reasonable increase in a very short amount of time. So there's been a lot of work done to add the appropriate staff, and certainly Measure R has helped us a lot in the last year. I found this old photograph. This is, these are the people who are, were Galt PD in nineteen fifty-six. Many historians know where this picture was taken, because I don't, but it's obviously wherever the Police Department was in nineteen fifty-six. But a real neat old picture, you know, back in the day. It was the year I was born, so it was back in the day before me. But we look a little more modern than that nowadays. A little, we've come away since then. Now, the important thing for the- Now, the, the important thing for the police department and the service we provide the community is, so what are we doing with crime? Because that's what shapes our quality of life in town and the livability of our city. And, you know, we've been fortunate, I, you know, I don't wanna, I wanna be careful not to take too much credit for the police department's sake, because some of these things are cyclical and they're not all the police department's doing. But I don't think it's coincidence that as we've added staff and we focused on our crime issues, that crime has gone down. Particularly if you, if you look at two thousand and eight versus two thousand and seven, these are your part-one crimes, you know, your, your major crimes. And they went down, you know, that's a pretty hefty drop. That's a thirty-something percent, thirty-two, thirty-three percent drop. So, and then we followed up last year with another fourteen percent drop, thirteen and some change on top of that. So it's a little baffling, because my, my, you know, my experience over the years is as the economy does worse, crime generally goes up. So I, I don't have a, a good handle on it. Violent crime in the cities around us has gone up, although their overall crime rates have gone down. And in, in our case, we've had, we have had a few more incidences of violent crime. But as, as an overall trend, our violent crime has not gone up. We had, we had a couple of exceptional incidences. We've had a homicide that was gang-related. And we had an accidental shooting. If anyone saw the article today, that young man was sentenced today to four years. So, but in the previous three years, we hadn't had any fatal incidents as far as from the homicide standpoint. So we've also made some, I think, it's, it's good that the council has taken some focus action in the past on graffiti issues, because graffiti crime has gone down pretty significantly. And so although that isn't, you know, as big of a crime as, you know, the violent crime issues, it's certainly a big, a big deal with our livability, our, our, you know, how people feel comfortable living in our community. And so we have, we've made some pretty good inroads with that. So the, the one that, the one, the one crime statistic that has gone up is mostly due to our enforcement efforts, and that's the drug offenses. We don't get any reports of drug offenses. These are all the arrests that people make for drug offenses. The officers go out, they turn their traffic stops into search issues, and then they find drugs on people. So we're, this year, as part of our council goals, we've focused a lot of energy into two thousand and ten on drug enforcement and, and doing as much as we can to make as many drug arrests as we can. So I hope to see that number go up even, even higher.
Chief, before you change, or if you go back, in looking at this chart, how can you relate this to the impact on the gang situation in Galt?
We have, we have a, a slide further up where I will show you that we've calculated the gang crimes as part of the overall crime. So now we're, this, for the first time, we're starting to index what percentage of our total crime is gang-related crime. Although we just started doing it, so I don't have all these, I don't have this many years of data to, to look at. But I don't wanna guess at the percentage, but the gang-related crime is, is not a high majority of the crimes we get. But they are the majority, or the majority involvement in our violent crimes. So again, it doesn't take a lot of those crimes to have people on edge and feeling unsafe. But we do track the gang crimes separately as of two thousand and nine. Eight, rather, we started tracking the, the gang crimes separately. So I'll give you the statistic when I get, so I don't have to guess at it. I, I got to go through old photos when I put this together, and there's some really great pictures of, of the town, and the water tower's been around forever. And, you know, I think Ken Erickson took this picture because somebody got the crate myrtle in the front, and it's just a good picture. Somebody has a photographic eye, anyway. Looking at our arrests, the arrests have either held steady or gone, you know, relatively gone up. We've done a lot of work at, at, you know, catching and incarcerating those that violate the law. And I think it's a real tribute to the officers that we have working there. We have basically a lot of hard chargers. We have people who go out and actively try to do something about reducing crime. The force is young. We've got a, we've got a lot of younger officers, new, new officers. But we don't, we don't lack any enthusiasm. We may lack some experience, but we don't lack any enthusiasm. Everyone's out there trying to, to do their best to get these folks into custody so they, they don't harm somebody. Again, we just, I don't need to read all the stats to you, but we need, we're trying to refocus a little more on our traffic enforcement. We've been two years without really having a motor enforcement officer, so our citations have suffered a bit. We still give lots of warnings and still write citations, but the addition of the traffic officer, we'll see that number increase significantly. The motor officer is out there daily, and he does a lot of citations and a lot of stops. You know, we've, we've been lucky the last couple of years, no fatal accidents, but we're not always immune. We've had a couple over the last five years. And then, you know, the accident picture in general, although we still occasionally get a severe injury accident, certainly not. Traffic isn't so bad in town where it's a real problem. It hasn't come to that yet. Just a flavor for what, how many things we, we get sent to a year. You know, it's about, last year, about twenty thousand, nineteen thousand, two hundred and forty-four calls for service incidents where an event was created that we went and responded to. We've seen them go up and seen them go down, but, you know, most people wouldn't imagine that a town, you know, kind of sleepy, quiet town like Galt has that many calls for service. We, we have a lot of business to do. I mean, we get called on lots of things. Not all of them are crime-related. I mean, that's one of the nice things about having a full-service department. We go out and do things that aren't necessarily crime-related, but it's nice to have the time to check on people that need checking on and, you know, giving a kid a ride to school who might be truant today and need to be, get that wake-up call and need to go to school today, and those kind of things. But when we're busy, we're really busy, because we don't have, you know, a lot of depth of extras. So that's, that's a pretty full load. Just, it, it's probably close to what my last city did, the city of sixty-five thousand, so that's a pretty full load. Uh-oh, went the wrong way. So crime trends, just, just to hit the highlights, this is all from the Matrix report, asking for, you know, what we should do to look at this. And so we report back, they want us to report back regularly on crime trends. And, you know, again, I've mentioned this, for the second consecutive year, we're down in part-one crime. This year, we're down almost thirteen percent, the year before, thirty-three percent. The number of violent crimes reported in Galt, homicide, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, and arson totaled sixty-seven incidents. The total percent of crime in Galt in two thousand, of violent crime, is two point eight percent of all the crimes we had. So a little less than three percent of all the crimes we have are reported as violent crime. Again, that doesn't make, you know, we wish we didn't have any, but it does put some perspective that that isn't, the majority of the cases we have are violent crimes. So again, there is work to do on those. It, it was surprising to me that they were that few, because we tend to focus a lot on, you know, a shooting or a stabbing or, or that kind of crime. So it's, it's really not that big of a number in the overall total of crimes that we have. Out of the hundred and forty-one crimes, or this year, there was a hundred and forty-one gang-related crimes out of the total crimes of two thousand, three hundred and forty-one reported. So the number of our gang crimes, and this is what Barbara was asking me about, is about six point two percent in two thousand and nine. Now, that includes the vast majority of them are vandalism, or the graffiti crimes. But they also tend to be our most violent, violent crimes. And, you know, we, we go through cycles where it's quiet, and then we have gang issues where there's retribution and, and the gangs are feuding out amongst themselves. So that, you know, that's kind of a lull. We still have about a hundred documented gang members in town right now. And it's mostly Serenyo Norteno Hispanic gangs that we deal with in Galt. And we, we work pretty close with Lodi, because some of the same gang families and gang members are issued over in Lodi. So we, we still focus on that as our major, major crime problem in town. The Matrix report, which the council commissioned back in two thousand and six, made a bunch of recommendations on things they wanted to see accomplished. And so although I didn't list them all, I tried to hit the highlights here to, to give the council a sense and the public a sense for what we have done since the Matrix report suggested these, these improvements. So they're, they really wanted us to see to have, have our staffing level up to a forty-five percent level of proactivity. And back in two thousand and eight, the council, one of the goals was for us to work on the sales tax measure. So we worked on the sales tax measure. It passed. It's been, it will be fully implemented by, well, it's fully implemented now, but we will have at least all the people in place that we can afford to put in place by July of this year, when we bring the school resource officer on. And we are at the forty-five percent level with the staffing we have now. The additional dispatcher has already been hired and is in, just finishing training now. And so that, that part of it's been addressed. When I first got here, we had several part-time officers. We converted them to full-time, so that was done back in two thousand and seven. We did not have full supervisory coverage when I started here. We do now. We promoted two, two employees to supervisors, to sergeants. And every patrol shift has a sergeant on duty at all times. And we are folding that number of what we have now. Matrix said that we should increase our traffic enforcement and be better at documenting what we're doing. And we have, we've done that. We have a lot of statistical analysis now that we can look at to see if we're doing the things we wanna do and whether the, the employees are, are pushing in the, in the areas we ask them to push for. Traffic is always a discretionary item. I mean, we, you know, part of my view on traffic is that it's, it's used to teach people. So sometimes a warning is as good of a tool as a ticket. Other times, you know, folks need the ticket. I leave that up to the officers. We don't tell them how many to write, but we expect them to do something in the traffic mission so that, you know, one of the, the most frequent complaints, and I'm sure the council gets them also, but the chief's office gets, is speeding vehicles on my street. You know, people driving like wild people up and down my residential area. So we try to focus on that. Sometimes it's like magic. When the black and whites are out there, the people disappear and you never see them again. But sometimes they go out and they write a handful of tickets. Sometimes most of those tickets are the neighbors from the people who, who complained. It's just one of those phenomenon that, you know, the people that drive on your street are generally your neighbors. So, but you know what? By having the units out there, we slow people down. We remind people that there's a lot of pedestrians in schools, so to be careful. As you can see in that last, the last part of the traffic enforcement bullet, last year, we gave forty-two hundred warnings. So I think the folks do a pretty good job being generous with the warnings. We certainly don't write everybody we stop by a long shot. We had a full-time SWAT team when I started here. It didn't get utilized much. There were some issues with it being trained properly and being trained regularly. It was really difficult, considering it didn't get used at all, very rarely. It was difficult to justify paying it, so we got involved with Elk Grove as part of a regional SWAT team. We have two employees who go, who are, who are selected amongst a bunch of employees who tried out for the position. And it's worked out real well. They get, Elk Grove's a little bigger city, it's a little busier city. So they get used frequently, so all that training is put to, is put to use on a regular basis. And then, you know, the, the other side is when we need something, we can call Elk Grove, and they'll supply their entire SWAT team for us, because our members are on it. The, the two officers involved in that really enjoy it. It's a lot of work, a lot of exercise. They train rigorously, week in and week out, staying in shape, running, doing all kinds of stuff to stay physically fit. Investigative staffing, Matrix asks that, you know, that we have enough investigators to, to pick up our clearance rate. The effectiveness of your investigation staff is generally looked, is gauged by your clearance rate. How many of the crimes do you solve? Do you catch somebody? Do you close? And so we had two investigators when I started. We've moved that up to four, plus a full-time sergeant. And it's really been good for us as far as, particularly when you have the violent crimes. It's nice to be able to bring an entire unit out there, impact the crime immediately, have some of the people go after the offender while others are processing the crime scene. The ability to do that in a small department is limited, because we don't have that many people. But when you have a whole unit of investigators who can come out and do that, that's why we have the success we've had in the last two homicide cases. We had people in custody relatively quickly. And, you know, in the, the, the one over at the ballroom, I mean, they did some pretty extensive coverage of the county to track that suspect down. They were out there quite a bit, running down leads until they, they brought, they brought the guy into custody. And so you can see some of what they did in two thousand and nine. They had four hundred and ninety-eight assigned cases and closed three hundred and thirty-nine. That's almost seventy percent closure rate. That, that's really, really good. They made or assisted in making sixty-one arrests, served twenty-eight search warrants, conducted ninety probation searches and thirty-five parole searches. That is our main weapon on how we keep the gang violence down. We are proactively, you know, on to the people that are in the gangs. We, we visit them on a regular basis in parole or probation searches. So we keep the pressure on, so they know we're watching them and we're, we're monitoring them, so that we don't have, you know, random drive-by violence and that, and that type of stuff. Dispatching service, we've added an additional dispatcher, so that we've had, we have overlap now. We have two dispatchers on when we're busy, which really is, is a boon for safety for our officers. It, it can get very busy in there. When the dispatchers are alone, not only does the nine-one-one phones ring in there, but all the business lines ring in there after hours. So when we don't have clerks on duty, they answer everything that goes on in there, and it can be, with all the computer requests, it can be a busy place. We've begun tracking our records management section as, as requested by Matrix. So we have an idea of how much work they produce and, and how many cases they index and how many district attorney complaints they file. And you can see that this division, which is really one and a half people, we have one temp employee and one full-time employee. They process three thousand, three hundred and fifty-four reports, thousand, ninety-eight adult arrest reports, two hundred and thirty-two juvenile arrest reports, you know, two hundred and thirty-eight field interviews, two thousand, two hundred and forty-eight moving citations. They do an unbelievable amount of work. And this is the part of the police department nobody sees. But without this work, you could arrest anyone you want, but the cases don't go to the DA's office, the tickets don't go to the traffic court. Nothing goes anywhere without these people doing it. So this is real vital that we have, we have enough staff to move that along. Otherwise, the arrests end up having the people released from jail without the reports being processed. And so we do a pretty good job with a pretty small crew in there. Matrix wanted to make sure that when they talked about giving us enough personnel to have forty-five percent proactive time, that we did something with the proactive time. And we, we've made a real push for people to go out and, you know, and, and spend their time proactively. Stop, stop the people out late at night, stop the suspicious vehicles, you know, stop the, the known pro-leasing gang members, as long as you have reasonable cause to stop them. And, you know, and make sure they know that we have officers out here that aren't gonna just let people do what they please all over town. And so that's why you see there's twelve hundred and thirty-eight cases last year that were self-initiated. That's not something they got sent to. That was something they drummed up on their own, so we, we've done a pretty good job being proactive. As we get more people on border, we get fully fleshed with the people we have, as Measure R fills out what we have now. We'll be doing some summertime park patrols, and it's kind of nice to get people out on foot in the parks after dark and on the trails, because, you know, we often get reports of, you know, different petty crime going on out there. So it's nice to, people see an officer out there on those trails, and they start to think, wow, maybe I'm not out here out of sight so far, because the police are out here. But meanwhile, we, we spend a lot of time downtown at night, stopping people on bikes. Galt's got a lot of folks on bikes riding around late at night. So we, we, we spend a lot of time checking on those folks. We develop performance measures based on our data from CADN, the Computer-Aided Dispatch and Record Management System. So, and, you know, we're looking at, this, this kind of tells us about our response times. How long does it take the police to get there on most of our priority calls? Our average for last year was three minutes and two seconds from dispatch to the first unit arrival. Those were your priority ones, your crimes against people. And so that's still pretty good. I mean, I hadn't, it's pretty phenomenal coming from the Bay Area where traffic is so bad, you couldn't get anywhere in under ten minutes. But we're, we're still arriving anywhere in the city on priority crimes under three minutes and two seconds. And then for property crimes or, or other important crimes, three minutes and forty-two seconds, which is a pretty fast response. Now, obviously, if you're the victim, it probably feels like forever, but, you know, I think we're, we're getting where we need to be pretty easily all over town. And a lot of that isn't, you know, town isn't heavily congested. There's still, you know, unless you need to get across C Street on a market day, when school lets out at noon. That, that's, that can be a bad one, but other than that, we can get where we need to go any day of the week. So, but it's nice to track that, because when you see that start to slip, that's when you need to make other adjustments, when you see that response time start to slip. This is the number I was talking about that the detective division is providing us. This is the closure rates compared against cities in the United States under twenty-five thousand, population under twenty-five thousand. So this is the benchmark we compare ourselves to. And so the first number is- to, um, and so, the first number is the Galt closure rate, and then the second number is the si- the nation, national average. So for our homicide rate, um, in two thousand and nine, we closed one hundred percent, um, for our rape rate, we closed seventy-one percent, um, against the national average of thirty-eight percent, um, robberies, still about, above the national average by five percent, aggravated assault, and this is often our gang-related assaults, um, aggravated meaning using a weapon with severe injury, um, we, we are about fifteen percent ahead of an, of the national average. Our property crimes, we're not doing as well as we do on the persons crimes, um, there's room for improvement there, um, we're about five percent behind on burglaries, about seven percent behind on larcenies, which is just another word for the, the different types of petty thefts that we have, um, and about ten percent behind on stolen vehicles. Um, although interestingly enough, the stolen vehicle phenomenon in Galt has dropped pretty drastically, um, we'd seen that number go down quite a bit, um, they still have some stolen, but not at the rate we were doing in two thousand and seven when they were stealing them all the time. Um, some of that is due to the technology, um, the new, the new, um, cars with OnStar, they're, they're real difficult to steal, they're hard to hotwire, um, so, technology has finally made it difficult enough, um, what we see stolen a lot is Toyota Camrys, um, from the two thousand and six, two thousand and five years, those are the popular ones to steal because the shaved keys will still fit in them in this, they still steal them, but the new stuff, it's much harder to steal.
Well, I feel really blessed, Chief, nobody's tried to steal my car so far, so.
You're fortunate. Um, that, this is my conclusion, and then I'll be glad to take questions. Um, so by the end of, of this year, two thousand and ten, all the recommendations put forth in the Matrix plan will have been implemented. Um, beyond the implementation of the strategic plan, there are other ongoing efforts, so I don't want, uh, wanna make sure the council knows that we didn't just answer the questions in the Matrix suggestions. Um, the property and evidence area of the department has received new software, handheld scanner, alarms, and improved storage containers, um, a program of monthly evidence purging has been begun to preserve space, you know, believe it or not, we have a brand-new building, but you run out of space because we take in a lot of evidence almost on an annual basis, so if you aren't purging that on a regular basis, in five years, you're out of space. So, um, the new software has allowed us to, um, do monthly purging where we get rid of stuff and, um, those cases are adjudicated or we're past the time we can prosecute people, we, we start to get rid of things and we don't just accumulate them forever. Um, we also do an annual internal audit, um, and I do that, my next one's in May, um, we randomly pick ten cases and we have them produce the cases off with the scanner and see that all the evidence that's supposed to be there is in there, property bagged, tagged and marked, um, and that's just, uh, a way to make sure our systems are working properly. Um, the police dispatch unit has a complete upgrade of the dispatch councils, the go-live date for this, and I've been saying this about so many times, I'm afraid to say it, but they actually are gonna turn it on April fourteenth, I was told, um, the tower's up and running, we're gonna have our eight hundred megahertz system and, uh, I'm sure the fire department's gonna be tickled to death because they're, they need it as bad as we do, um, and so we will have our new dispatch system up and running in the middle of April, uh, we got a grant for two hundred and seventy thousand dollars from Sacramento County OES to do that, um, so we're, we're really pleased to be part of the Sacramento Radio Consortium, um, so that we're gonna be able to talk to not only our own fire department, but the other police departments in our area, um, it, it's real important for us to have that intercommunication. Um, we, since two thousand and six, we bought seven new police cars, um, so we are continuing our commitment to our equipment so that the officers have the latest and, and the best equipment, so we're not putting people's lives in danger because the equipment is too old or it doesn't work well, um, so, uh, I think that's something we should be proud of. Um, in our police holding facility, we had a, an, uh, one of the jail cells was unusable, unusable because it had a, at the time, instead of the art, rubber floor, um, well, the rubber floor peeled, and it got to be, it was, whatever, it didn't cure properly or whatever, um, you couldn't use it because it was dangerous that the, the, the people in custody would go in there and start tearing pieces of it off and maybe hurt themselves, so we had to pull the rubber floor out, um, and then we had to build a bench, and it has to be built by, um, specifications, but, um, Public Works came and we got the specifications in, we got an inspection by the, um, the fire marshal as well as the people that run the correctional, correctional inspections for the local jails, the police department jails, and it was, um, a hundred percent, it was a great job, a good cooperation, we did it for a relatively small amount of money, and we have the cell back in service, so we, we have a full-use cell again, um, it was kinda what we called the drunk tank, it was a, a bigger cell, the rubber floor was put in initially so that if people collapsed or fell down, that they wouldn't get hurt, but the, um, it, it just, for whatever reason, it didn't take well, the, the rubber matting didn't take well. Um, so we had our two thousand and nine inspection and we got it, and we got a, um, cop marks for the inspection on that. Um, we are about to go live on, on a project called Cop Link, it's from a grant from the Department of Justice, it's, um, it's gonna be fantastic information sharing with us in four counties in the region, uh, all our information will be live and we'll be able to get that information from all of Sacramento County, all of Yolo County, all of El Dorado County, and all of Placer County, sharing with the agencies and the jail systems in those, uh, in those areas. Um, if you've ever tried to track somebody down, each little agency can be its own little kingdom, so it's nice to be able to share that information, so you can find people, and this is phenomenal, um, new technology, you can send pictures of the wanted people out on the smartphones and, and just a bunch of things that, you know, we used to see on James Bond and think we'd never get there, but, um, it's finally arrived in, in modern-day policing, so, uh, it's good stuff. Um, and it was really nice to be picked as a beta test site, as, we would've never got in on this, um, all bigger agencies were invited, but, um, we were able to get included in that, so we got all those, everything for free for the first couple of years, anyway. Um, it's really good technology. Um, we've also started since two thousand and six, fifty-five neighborhood watch groups, uh, have been formed in Galt and maintained, hundreds of children have graduated from the character counts program, which is started and is maintained through the Galt Police Crime Prevention Officer, dozens of community awareness meetings on gang prevention and gang violence have been conducted, most of this is through, uh, TJ and Bruce Ramos, um, the partnerships with both school districts, um, it's strong and collaborative, um, and, um, they're working very well, so, looking forward to two thousand and twelve, a new look should be given to the strategic plan that has brought Galt to where we are now, adjustments and new directions should be explored, um, issues of the future, um, will most likely include policing of the, uh, second high school, um, continuing gang influence, new proposed retail in Galt as it develops, and population growth, um, as well as the cost of personnel programs and the ongoing fiscal crisis where we're at right now. Um, truly, we've come a long way, the police department has, in a short time, prudent planning and forward-thinking leadership will be needed to continue to build upon successes of the last three years. Um, I guess, I'll just wrap up by saying if I sound a little bit proud of my department, I am, because they've done a heck of a job and, um, I think the community should be proud that they, um, they do what they can and, um, to make the community safer, and, um, it's a good department, and they, and they really care about the community. Any, any questions?
Comments, Stacey?
Well, comments, yeah, I thought the report was very good, and what I really liked about this, and I wish there was a way that every department would have the opportunity to do this, we spent money for a consultant to come in and kinda give us some guidelines, and, um, we can see what you've accomplished, it's a measurable, um, performance that we can, um, be proud of, and, um, like I said, I think it's a good report, I used an exceptionally good, um, job of putting this together, it was entertaining with some of the old photographs, I enjoyed those especially. One thing that wasn't in the report that I would just like for you to touch, touch on if you would, and I think it's important that, that you talk about this, what is our current, um, status with, uh, police protection for, um, Liberty Ranch and Estrelita, which is outside the city limits? I know this is something that you've been working with the schools on and you've come to a pretty good, um, answer to that, would, would you mind sharing that with us? I think there's a lot of people that would like to know what you are doing there.
Sure, well, as, as I'm sure the council knows, Liberty Ranch is in the sheriff's jurisdiction, it's outside of the, it's outside of the city, but, um, it is basically a stone's throw from the city limits, I mean, the roadway on Marengo divides half the roadways in the city and half out, um, so, uh, we have, we have an agreement being as we're close and we know that the sheriff is short-staffed and not always as close as we are, that if they have a life-threatening emergency of any type, um, an assault, an accident, anything, that they can call us and we will respond directly, um, and then, you know, meanwhile, they can call the sheriff also, but we assume they're gonna be there much quicker than they are, um, and we will handle it, we'll get there, we'll stabilize it, and we'll handle it. Um, and then, you know, the agreement also, that they've agreed that for the, the run-of-the-mill issues, uh, you know, the, the small-time stuff that kids get involved in when they're at school, they'll just call the sheriff's department. So, uh, if we, if we have issues, that they're concerned of, of something that looks like it's gonna be a, a real life-threatening issue, um, we make sure we send people out there to, to help them out. Um, and we, we still work with, um, the SAR board, I mean, it's, and we, our participation with the district is with the entire district, so SAR boards where the, the kids are truant or they're not behaving, um, whether they go to Liberty Ranch or they go to Galt High or to Estrelita, we still sit on them, we still work with them, um, you know, we're, we're all hoping that the school hurry, hurries and annexes into the city, it would make it all easier, but for now, at least we have a working arrangement with them.
And I think it's important that the community, community knows the cooperation that's going on there, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Chief, I just wanted to say this is a great report, I think you specifically and your department in its entirety and CAPS and the community volunteers all should be very proud of what you've just presented to us. Um, I, I think it speaks for itself, well done and congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
I think you've done an outstanding job, uh, Chief, I think it's a reflection of yourself, and you really do have every reason to be proud, and you've really got some great officers out there in the street, and you said it yourself, you've got a lot, a lot of young officers with a lot of energy and they're really up there and they're, uh, stepping up to the plate. Um, I really appreciate the outstanding report you've done, this is really what we like to see, and I'm going way, I, I know that this is what we're going to see, and I'm glad Measure R has played a, a role with the number of officers we've been able to hire because I thought that was a big part of the Matrix, hiring more officers, and that came along at a very good time, so, I thank you, and I, I thank CAPS for all their hard work and your officers, and, uh, I really think you're setting an example for the other communities around us to follow, so, thank you very much.
Yeah, Chief, we've been getting information, uh, that was in your reports tonight, kind of on an incremental basis over the last couple of years, so, the numbers aren't really surprising to all of us, you've been doing a fantastic job with the department, I wish that I could say I was part of the, the group that brought you in here, but I've said this on multiple occasions, that it's the best thing that has ever happened to our police department here in the city of Galt, you've, you've reversed a lot of negative sentiment in the community about how our police department reacts to situations when they arise, you've made our police department one of the most professional, productive units in all of Northern California, and as Dawn said, I think it's a testament to yourself and to the, the will that you've instilled in the officers that, that work with you every day, so, I'm proud to have you.
Thank you, thanks so much.
Yeah, thanks, Chief, to you and your staff, every one of you did a lot of work.
Thank you.
Good job.
Just make a comment, if, if members of the public want to see the report, addition to, it's on the, the council agenda, but I think we're gonna add it to the police department website, that's kind of a permanent thing there, that people can go and take a look at, it'll be updated every couple of years, we'll come back and let the council know how we're doing.
That's very good, good call, Jason.
One, one last thing, Chief, that picture you asked about might be at the corner of C Street and Lincoln, but you might check with, uh, the Historical Society or Genie Olson, they might be able to tell you for sure, but I, Liz, do you recall or anyone else, isn't that where they used to be at one time?
That, that is where the police department was, and that's what my, my thinking was when, when we were talking about it, but the background in the photo doesn't quite look like that building, so I think that was, the photo was taken before the police department moved into that building there.
Yeah.
Between, uh, about two blocks off of Lincoln, I think the building is still there, with the two-story apartment next to the, to the old works and, and building like the size of, I do know that that used to be the, the sheriff's department and where they held the, the judge, uh, what made was in there, I think that's it, it was out there, it was sized square, so I think it's.
All right, well, thank you. Uh, we'll need a motion to, for the update.
Move we accept the Chief's, uh, report and the strategic plan as presented.
I'll second.
Seconded, any further discussion? None, call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Uh, next item is communication. Was there any communications?
No.
We will adjourn to the redevelopment agency. Roll call, please.
Board members Payne?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Public comment?
There's no speakers.
Information consent agenda item, I guess we have three, if you, get you to read those off for me, please.
Okay, three items, number one, approval of the minutes of the meeting of March twenty-third, two thousand and ten, number two, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants, and number three, approval of the treasurer's report for the period ending February two thousand and ten.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? None, this is one of the other new items that we'll have to do a roll call vote, is that correct, Liz?
That's correct. Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Claire?
Aye.
Councilmember Hay- Haynes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meredith?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Adjourn and reconvene to the Galt City Council, City Clerk's report.
Just a couple of reminders, uh, there's a, on April eighth, there's a planning commission meeting at six-thirty PM in the council chambers, on April fourteenth, there's a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting at seven PM in the council chambers, April fifteenth, a beautification committee meeting at three-thirty in the City Hall Community Room, on Saturday, April seventeenth, uh, we will be holding a household hazardous waste and shredded event from nine to one at the Galt Market, which is right behind City Hall, um, everybody can bring their hazardous waste, their paints, their propane tanks, um, and any documents that, uh, to be shredded, and we will take care of that from nine to one. That takes us to our next city council meeting of April twentieth, and just a reminder, that council meeting will be held at Chavoya Center, uh, at the normal time, seven PM.
Comments by staff? Jason?
Um, I believe our city attorney has a couple of comments.
Um, I have two items I'd like to touch on briefly this evening, uh, just pass those out, the first item I wanted to talk about is, but a notice of intent to circulate a petition with the city for the purpose of creating a local hiring ordinance has been filed with the city, so what I'd like to hand out this evening is just a brief, uh, memo that lays out the procedures applicable to a voter-initiative process, and the one item that I wanted to in particular call to your attention is that if in fact the, uh, petitioners are able to gather sufficient signatures and it's certified by the clerk and it comes to the city council, that there are three options that the city council is going to have, uh, the first option would be to adopt the ordinance without alteration, uh, the second would be to submit the initiative to the voters at either a special or a general election, depending upon the number of, uh, signatures that are gathered, the last item is to refer the measure to any city agency for a report, and a report can essentially be on any item that you think is relevant to the particular, uh, item, oftentimes the council will refer the matter, uh, for a report on the fiscal impact of the measure, um, it might, uh, be a, a report on, uh, how it might impact, uh, infrastructure needs of the city, anything that you think is relevant, it's a, it's a pretty wide, um, uh, wide option. Now, this report can, uh, can be asked for at the time that the measure comes before the city council, in which case the report needs to be returned to the city council no later than thirty days, uh, after the certification of the signatures, but I wanted to make you aware of the fact that this type of re- of a report can in fact be asked, uh, asked for by the city council while the measure is out for signature gathering, so if, for example, there was an item that, uh, that you felt, uh, needed to be evaluated or looked into and might take more than a thirty-day timeframe, um, that opportunity is available to the council, uh, at any time. So, um, I just, if there's any questions, if you have an opportunity to, to review this memo, please, uh, please give me a call or, uh, send me an email. Uh, the second item that I wanted to talk about this evening is at the next city council meeting, uh, it's scheduled that the council will hear the appeal of the Walmart project. And I wanted to, uh, talk briefly about the, uh, the process associated with that appeal. Even though the appeal is on a very limited item, in fact, it is an appeal related to just a condition on the youth permit. Whenever an appeal is filed, it essentially reopens the entire project. So the council's jurisdiction on this project is not limited to just reviewing that condition. The council will have the opportunity to, uh, deny the appeal, which essentially leaves the planning commission action intact. You can grant the appeal and then reapprove, reapprove the project with any modified conditions the council deems appropriate, or you can grant the appeal and deny the project. So we'll go over that again, um, next, at the next meeting, but I wanted to alert you to the fact that, uh, we should come prepared at the next meeting to review, review the totality of the project and not just that particular condition. If there's any, uh, question this evening, I'd be happy to respond and as you get prepared for, uh, the meeting of the twentieth, if you have any, uh, questions, please, uh, please give me a call or send me an email.
I have a question briefly, Steve. I know that we'd been advised before not to attend the planning commission meeting in order to stay impartial regarding the project. I think it would be of benefit to hear the planning commission's arguments as to why they limited these store hours to eleven o'clock rather than midnight as, as was proposed. Is that stepping outside of, of what you think we should be legally doing as a city council?
Um, no, if I, I think that if the, if the council desires, uh, to have, um, uh, the minutes of that, that meeting, uh, we can have those made available, Liz can be introduced to, uh, the record of your proceeding on the twentieth. The main, the main concern that I had as it relates to, uh, attendance at the, the planning commission meeting is that when we meet on the twentieth or whenever you ultimately make a decision, your decision needs to be based on evidence that is in your record. So to the extent that there was something you heard at the planning commission meeting and it wasn't part of that, of your record, um, it would create a potential concern. But if we distribute the minutes, those are made part of, uh, of the record on the twentieth, all council members have a copy of the tape, um, that would, uh, certainly be appropriate if that's your desire.
And maybe for the sake of the public, we should, we should just let everyone know who filed the appeal.
Um, the, the only appeal that we have currently is an appeal from Walmart and the basis of the appeal was, uh, on relating to the hours of operation of the store.
Thank you.
Sort of the council's aware too, I, I believe the final EIR, the conditions of approval, that information has already been distributed to the council. There will be some additional information in pre- in advance of the meeting on the twentieth that will be distributed as soon as it is available as well. But all the information that you already have is certainly applicable to your decision and, and the appeal hearing on the twentieth.
Any other questions? If not, I have a couple of comments. Uh, I guess to, not just necessarily Steve, but to Jason, I guess, uh, I mean, the next meeting is going to be montumental, one way or the other, okay? So my concern is, is our, and you and your staff, do you feel that we'll be able to, uh, get through the meeting in one evening? I think planning took a good three hours or three and a half hours and do, I don't even know how many speakers there were, were there like thirty or?
Thirty-three.
There was about thirty, thirty-three. At five minutes each.
As a matter of fact, the chair limited the speaking to three minutes, uh, per person.
And was that timely? I mean, did everyone feel like they had enough?
I don't, I, I, I don't know, but most people were able to conclude their comments within that timeframe.
Well, that's my concern, I mean, we don't know until we get there. You know, I just want to make sure, and I know all the council, including me, I, I want to make sure that every member of the public gets the opportunity to speak. You know, I'm looking at three hundred people wanting to speak. I'm not asking for three hundred people, but, you know, hypothetically. So I just wanted us all to realize, as we do here and staff does and, and you folks from the public, you know, I, I believe that, and I know we will, it's going to be passionate one way or the other. So I just want to remind, and this is for me probably foremost and the rest of council and the public, please remain to be as respectful as possible, and I'm not saying anyone is not, I know we all are. Council members, uh, that's including me, as I said, uh, I want to give the opportunity again for everyone to speak and give them the dialogue. Uh, my concern is, uh, we give the five minutes, is it going to give enough time? I know no one likes it when I say three minutes, but if staff says it worked well with three minutes and hypothetically, we have, you know, seventy-five or a hundred, two hundred people there.
The, the other thing that the chairman did ask is if there were representatives of particular groups, that they speak on their behalf and that seemed to, to, to do, to work well. Uh, like I said, most people were able to comment within the three minutes.
And that worked pretty well?
Yes.
Everyone was pretty receptive to that.
Yeah, okay. The other, the other. It was a, it was a, um, yeah.
Couple of times?
There was energy in the me- in, in the meeting.
I think it was, the meeting went very well.
Yeah.
I think, uh, people were respectful of, you know, whatever the position was. And, um, I think one of the other things that the chair did was encourage people if they had something new to offer to the debate or the discussion, that they were certainly encouraged to come up and make those comments, but that what they were trying to avoid is having twenty people get up and say the exact same thing.
Sure.
And so that was encouraged by all the members of the group, so, um, and I think, I think people respected that and for the most part, the comments that were made were, were unique to the individual that was, was getting up there. So I thought that worked, worked pretty well.
Okay. That was just my comments. I don't know how council, the rest of the council member feels about it. I know that we've always been, you know, pretty good and even when we've been heated at each other, we calm down and relax, so, and I guess you're actually, uh, kind of setting up maybe a few other items, but we're basically, the one agenda item is going to be the Walmart.
Yeah, we've tried to clear the agenda as much as we can. We are going to have some things on the consent calendar, hopefully things that are non-controversial and, and we can just, uh, the council can vote on, uh, that shouldn't take much time at all. And then we can get right into Walmart, so that would hopefully give us plenty of time to be able to discuss that i- give that item the, the time it needs.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? From council?
You ready for the council comments?
Go ahead.
Okay. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank, um, the Parks and Rec Department for their help with the springtime extravaganza. Um, I felt like it was very successful. We had quite a few businesses out there, I don't know, I'm guessing, uh, twenty or more involved, and, uh, the feedback we got was very good. They said, they had people attending that that said they didn't even know these businesses existed. And in most cases, it might have been home-based type businesses. So I think it was successful, I think it was going to be helpful to our, our business, um, and economic development plan. Uh, so again, thank you for that. Also, I attended the Stakehog, um, blueprint update, uh, last Friday, and I was happy to see that they highlighted the Galt Place from Galt as one of the, uh, projects. Uh, also, I attended the Stakehog, uh, meeting on air quality and climate control, um, and I would just say that that is going to be, in, in my opinion, is going to be a big influence in a lot of different ways. Uh, we're not talking just this climate and air, uh, transportation, housing, it's all going to be influenced by this. And there are going to be a number of public, um, workshops available, and I would encourage people to watch for them. I'm sure I'll keep you informed of the workshops when they're scheduled. And take them seriously because whatever comes out of those workshops, we're, will be influencing the future of, uh, our town and our state. Uh, Stakehog does not have a lot of, of, um, I'll just say teeth in what they are policies, um, what comes out of their, um, in the way of policies. But I can tell you the agencies, the regulatory agencies do pay a lot of attention to it, so it will be important. Um, let's see, I attended the youth committee meeting last night, they're getting ready for a new group to come in, uh, they're also getting ready to interview our department heads, um, it didn't take long. So, uh, it was a pretty interesting meeting and also, uh, our city clerk met with them, asked for their help with the census, uh, just, you know, encouraging people to respond. And that's it, thank you very much.
Had, uh, two meetings since we last met, one was the Stakehog Board Meeting, one was the Air Quality District Board Meeting. And both, as we are and others, are still wrestling with their budgets as we move forward. Um, one of the things with the air district we're wrestling with is, at a time when businesses are needing to prosper and have lower costs, is the cost of implementing all the continuing regulations that are passed down to the districts from both a federal and state level. And in the case of AB thirty-two, the state's, uh, continuing efforts to deal with climate change, um, we can see other potential things coming and of course, a lot of talk at the federal level, so that's going to be a challenge as those requirements, uh, continue to get passed and, and passed down to us and the effects they'll have on businesses, both large and small, so. Um, Chief, one thing if I can, I forgot to ask when you were giving your report, uh, I'll say I have, I won't say you have, I have in the past not been fully satisfied with the level of, uh, in, well, let's say enforcement, I guess, the district attorney's ability to prosecute after you and your department have done the work in apprehending someone. Uh, I won't ask you to comment whether you agree or disagree, but do you see that trend improving or getting worse based on the county's budget issues?
Um, yeah, I think definitely it's going to get worse. Um, we are looking at probably some pretty massive layoffs on the county side, including district attorneys. Um, and so I imagine there's going to be whole, uh, there already is probably large seg- segments of the misdemeanor calendar that they are not going to prosecute anymore.
Okay, um, to our city attorney, we've touched on this before, but if we can perhaps revisit any opportunities we have to handle matters locally, so to speak, uh, given that that's apparently where the district attorney's office is going, it's got to be enormously frustrating for our police department and staff to finally capture an individual who's doing whatever from graffiti on up and then have them back on the street probably before they can fill out their own paperwork. So, uh, for maybe a future meeting, we could talk about what possible alternatives do we have to try and do anything.
Okay. Any other comment? Daryl?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Haynes?
Um, I just want to go back and Barbara was talking about the workshops at Stakehog. Uh, I agree, those, those workshops are very, very important. Anybody out there listening, if you have any interest, questions, any concerns, I think it's really important that you take the time and make those workshops because that's a great opportunity to either get educated, ask questions and, and really know what's going on. Uh, don't miss that opportunity. Um, I attended the Galt Place, uh, groundbreaking, as we all did, and, uh, I thought that was outstanding, it was really nice, and it's nice to see, uh, more units, senior housing coming to Galt as well as more commercial. I want to make a comment about that, I thought it was, uh, very special. Quite a windy day, but, uh, it was well worth the effort.
And there was about seventy of us there, I think.
Yeah, there was seventy of us, and we had, uh, Mr. Lockler came out.
Yes.
And, um, we were all there, so it, it was a nice event, it was well done, so, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Meredith?
I have a, uh, future meeting, uh, request. There's an item that we were lobbying for in Washington DC on behalf of the National League of Cities, and I, I believe it's been endorsed by the California League of Cities as well. That is the, uh, jobs bill that's been introduced by Congressman George Miller from down in Southern California. So I, I'd like to request to put that on the agenda the first meeting in May for a letter of endorsement from the mayor to be sent on behalf of the city council in support of the measure. Last week I had the opportunity, I got an invitation to go watch Omri Kassdi be recognized by the Sacramento City Council as the first Israeli-born national basketball player here in the United States. It's a great event, um, it's just, he's a really well-spoken, humble individual. If anyone got a chance to see that on, on the city council's website, he gave a great little speech about how he's been embraced by the greater Sacramento community. While I was at that meeting, I also got to watch a presentation on the Curtis Park Development, which is just an amazing example of what can be done with hazardous waste, uh, ground field locations. So I've been following that a little bit in the newspaper, it's been a real controversial project, but some of the technologies that they're using are just unbelievable, putting permanent caps in the ground to cap hazardous waste, just a really neat meeting. Last weekend I had the opportunity to, uh, go out to the opening ceremonies for T-ball and instructional boys and girls. Um, Boyce and Armando, I wanted to thank you guys for the hard work that your staff did in getting the fields ready. I know, I got a lot of comments from parents out there about how great the fields look already this early in the season, so. Also wanted to mention, uh, well, our city attorney's already touched on it a little bit, the ballot measure for the local hiring ordinance will be moving forward. I think the number that was given was nine hundred signatures, is that correct? Somewhere in the ballpark of?
Um, right about, about nine hundred and fifty.
Councilmember Haynes and I have a, a co- we've got a big group of individuals that are going to be out there and we will collect the nine hundred and fifty signatures to put this on the ballot in November, so. If anyone would like to get involved in the process, you can reach me through my city council email address or through my city council phone number. And that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Hope everyone has a great week. We will adjourn at, Liz?
Well, that's too tight, Liz.
A joke.
Hi, Daryl.
Can you give me a call, uh, this number when you have a moment?
I'll just call back. When you have a moment. Okay, I will.
Yep, I'll call you back in just a little bit, okay? Thanks.
The jobs bill, you called it?
Yeah.
Put it on my follow-up. Just to make sure I get something sent, I don't put on my follow-up. I can, I can look through. Very beautiful. The tiny, I guess it's assigned to me. That's how many contributions it may make. Yeah. And then there was another one. When you were talking about minutes from the planning commission?
Yeah.
Did it come out that I'm to distribute the draft minutes from the planning commission? Is that what you requested? Okay. I wrote it down, but I didn't get it myself, okay. Yeah. Well, I, I know and I don't know if you got my email, I sent her an email that, uh, one fragment of requests, CD, and I didn't hear about it from anybody, but you want written minutes? He didn't, he didn't, he wasn't happy about it, but he said it's something he really wanted, I did have something that he really wanted, so. Anyway, I will get those, once they're done, I mean, I don't know if they're done yet, but I'll call her and see if it's bad. Uh, she's the secretary of, she's on this place, uh. Oh. Sorry. I know you were talking to Meredith. Minutes from the planning. Hi, how are you? Hi, how are you? The second speaker was 10 minutes? Um, trying to think of what he said. I've got it in my minutes. Let me finish typing this in office. Oh. Um, yeah. It was a local hiring ordinance that came to council, actually probably six or eight months ago, and then it came back. Councilmember Meredith brought it back to the body. Two weeks ago, maybe. First meeting in April, which would be April... Oh no, the last meeting in March. And actually, we... Let me just look at my calendar again. It was March 23rd, it was a special meeting. And council voted 3 to 2, voted it down. So now there's a local citizen who's bringing a ballot measure forward, which is the local hiring ordinance that he brought forward and council voted down. So now it's going through the initiative process. And right, and which means you go out and you get signatures and there's a whole process. So now we have a citizen who's doing this. And that's, he kind of tagged on to the speaker and said, you know, he would be supporting it and be helping gather the signatures. So that's the subject.